Well, welcome. Tonight, twice a year, we have an annual and a special town meeting. This is the purest form of government that we can have. And over the last few decades that I've been involved, I've been really impressed how well our town meeting members as a group have steered our little town. You know, we talk about how much money we spend and we get taxed too hard. Well, in general, that's a given, but compared to every other town around us, for what we get, we don't get taxed anywhere near at their rates. So tonight, we're going to talk about the fall town meeting. And we'll start with a real strange question is, will there be one? But then we're going to go through all the articles because you should know what we were planning on as a group. So why don't we start with introductions?
Chris Moore, chairman of the finance committee.
Will Kincaid, chairman of the Milford Board of Selectmen.
So this town meeting may or may not happen on November 9th, correct?
Correct.
What would be the determining factor?
Honestly, I think it's just our current state of affairs where Milford is in the communities with a higher, I guess, a higher growth of COVID positive tests. So as everyone knows who's watching, you know, every Wednesday we find out from the state whether or not Milford was moving into the red. We're obviously staying in the red right now. So from my standpoint, we've been working hand in hand with the Public Health Director, Jackie Murphy, our task force, which is made up of myself, the town administrator, the fire chief, the police chief, Dr. Murphy, and Chris George. And, you know, we're waiting for the Board of Health to continue to track. I'm sorry, I have a hard time talking with these masks on. Tracking our progress.
Now that we came in the studio and we're not close to each other, I can do without a mask until somebody gets up.
Okay.
When we go to leave, we'll be closer than six, eight feet apart. We're going to have to put them on again.
Fair enough.
That works for me.
But while we're sitting this far away.
Perfect. And one thing I want to just say at the beginning, and I think since we're talking about town meeting, it only goes without saying that the loss of our moderator is a huge factor. And I think that he's going to be dearly missed. He was a great man and obviously, in my opinion, he's the only moderator that I've ever seen. So he's hard to judge against, but talking to anybody who's gone to other town meetings and they've seen the way that Mike ran the meetings, he's going to be sorely missed. And Milford will miss him, and I will miss him as well.
I think everybody recognized, you know, when that gavel came down on you, he was hard, but he was fair. And that's all you could ask.
Well, what I liked most was over the years, from a town meeting member to my current position is, no matter what, you could always go to him. And I think he liked that you went to him prior to and say, this is what I'm trying to accomplish. How was the best time to do it? What's the best way to be recognized? I mean, he was a teacher, regardless of all of his other positions. He started as a teacher, and I had said that to him quite a few years ago, that I felt like he was still teaching when he was teaching a lot of us as we came up. Because like you said, Chris, we never knew another moderator. That was before our time.
Yeah, but you do when you watch town meetings from other towns.
I think Milford's quite enough. I try not to watch.
We've seen a couple over the years and it's like, okay, you're making me appreciate my moderator more and more.
I believe it.
And just the little things when he would just turn the light on and off on that little thing as people started to talk for a little too long and you could see him just click his light on and off.
Or the look.
Yeah.
You could tell when, you know, somebody got up for the fifth time to talk about the same thing. Okay, 42 articles. If we have a town meeting, but even if we don't have a town meeting November 9th, a lot of these articles, we still will have to go over sometime. And as I mentioned before the show, I would certainly hope we have a separate town meeting because I cannot imagine if we wait till May, what that article, what that warrant would look like to combine a year's worth. So we'll have to wait and see because my understanding is there's two ways that we can get a new town moderator. One, have a town meeting and elect a town moderator. Two, have an election.
Yes.
But to have it, if we cancel this upcoming town meeting, to have a town meeting, what would you say? Clerk can ask?
I believe how it works is, and this is all real, real new, obviously, that, you know, a warrant would be open, the board of selectmen would open a warrant, they'd allow articles to be submitted. We'd close the warrant, vote on the warrant. Then that warrant would have to be signed by the constable and posted by the town clerk. And how they have it in the law, the inhabitants of the town would have to be warned. And that's advertised and town meeting members would be contacted like they are now through social media, email. I'm not sure who would, I believe the town clerk would open the nominations.
Have the nominations to elect.
You said it's the purest form of government, and it is. And it's going to be right there on town meeting floor. If five people have an interest in it, there'll be five nominations, five speeches, five, whatever, you know, however it goes. And then there will be an election from the elected town meeting members. And then at that point, the elected moderator would take the gavel, as far as I understand.
Well, let's see. Article one, town meeting format. I mean, that's usually where town meeting reports, department reports. Chris gets up and gives a state of the financial situation the town is in. But now, Article two, compensation for salaried employees.
234 is almost a package deal, to be honest with you. The selectmen reviewed this and thought in our financial status that the raises for Article two people and elected officials that we forgot in our last town meeting, that we should readdress it now that the financial position's got a better idea of where it is and that we do have the monies available. And these three articles are to, you know, give them the raises that, you know, they deserve, to be honest with you.
To be fair, we went to them and said, we're not sure what our budget's going to be, how much money we're going to have. And they all supported holding back. When we found out we're going to be as good as we were, I mean, kind of a slap in the face if we turned around and said, well, thank you for watching out for us. We don't care about you.
And it's $43,000, which in $110 million budget is not a huge amount. But for those people, you know, they deserve those raises.
Well said.
Article five, ADA compliance.
Well, I know this is something that the town's been working on, came off of an original grant through the state that Rick Vilani, our town administrator, worked on to get. So now this is the, is this the second phase of it? I believe it is for the town buildings and the parks. So that's coming along. And I think, again, especially when you have the financial standing that we do and to get a help like this initially from a grant, there's no question with a town like us, with the population we have and the resources that we have, that our parks and buildings shouldn't be ADA compliant at this point in time.
But I also like the fact, Willie, that we're not jumping into it saying, it's going to cost us a million bucks. Let's just dive in.
No, nope. It started with seed money. We did an assessment, so.
So 150 a year, managed by the town manager, selectmen working out.
And the Parks Department's been huge in all this.
Little bit for this, little bit for that. And then as the needs evolve, we can still shift.
Exactly.
So this, for the next four years, I think, in the capital plan, we have 150 grand. But it's nothing specific. It's for bathrooms here, maybe, it's for stairs there, maybe.
Exactly.
My favorite article, Article six.
Tater chip money.
Tater chip funds.
This is simply as everything that is done at town meeting, finance wise, has to go through town meeting. So this basically is all funds from the vending machines throughout the school system. And in order to get those monies into the school activity fund, it needs to be voted on by town meeting.
And I think some people don't understand that there is no school department, Inc. There is no Parks Department, Inc. There is the town of Milford. So the town of Milford gets money in for vending machines and then reallocates it back because it was done in the school for school activities. So at the end of the day, we get to control, you know, we call it tater chip money, but I think if you go up there now, all the tasty stuff is gone.
We call it granola bar money.
Bottled water.
It's all healthy stuff now. Big one, Central Street Bridge.
Yeah, I mean, I think this is a, this is a no brainer. This is something that whether it's dams or bridges, we have to keep assessing. And over time, every bridge has to be, if not replaced, improved.
Do you think most people think we have a bridge in Central Street?
No, I think there's actually, the majority of our bridges, people probably don't realize they're bridges in this town.
And this is, and this is from the DOT. They've downgraded this bridge to, I forget what level it is, but it's been moved to where it has to be monitored and inspected every three months now.
Every 90 days now.
It has to be because it's gotten to the point where it has to be looked at that constantly because it's deteriorated to that point, so.
And you forget how many times you, I mean, it doesn't look like a bridge. You go over it in two seconds flat. But if it was missing and you couldn't go down Central Street, it would be a big deal.
No question.
Now it's million and a half dollar.
Yeah, yeah, a million and a half, and we have, we got a grant for $500,000.
So it took it from $2 million down to $1 million and a half.
Yep.
So this is one of these things where when grant money's available, you best be moving on it because if we don't, there's probably 10 towns behind us.
Absolutely.
That'll jump on it.
And it's in such a crucial spot of the town, and that route is used a lot.
Well, it's like the end of South Main Street when we did that and people were saying, what's down there? Well, let's see, do you ever want to go to the hospital?
Well, and this bridge is over 100 years old. Well over 100.
I didn't put it in, don't look at me, I'm not that old. Okay, question came up on Article eight, library carpet.
Yeah, it's in a high use area at the, at the library. It has been on the capital plan, but I think it was a little bit further out. But because of the wear and tear on it, they've decided that it just can't handle it. The little, what do you call them, those little tails that come out are starting to get caught on people's shoes and it's pulling out large areas. So Sue and the library trustees had asked to have this moved up and because of our position financially and because of, it just is needed to be done. We were favorable on that.
Well, we're fortunate that a lot of towns around us are trying to have the debate, can they come up with a budget big enough to not lose certification? We did the children's room last year and recarpeted that. And this year, it's like $12,000, which sounds like a lot of carpet, but for this grade and all, it really isn't a whole big area.
If you check out the library and, you know, I, my kids go to Stacy's, so every once in a while, I'll have to pick up my kids at the library. That is a busy, busy place. I mean, not in our current condition, maybe with COVID, but on a regular basis, that facility is filled with schoolchildren.
A big yellow school bus rolls in at Article nine.
Yeah, the school, I want to talk about all three school articles as a whole because we had talked, and Will and I, when we had talked at our chairman's meeting, we had acknowledged the schools and what they had given up and sacrificed and really worked as a team player for their budget. And when we did look at our funding and our availability for some capital projects, we went to the schools and we said, listen, you know, if you have some capital projects that you want to get done, we have some, I don't want to call it extra money because it's not extra money. It's money that we asked them to take back. They thought of three projects, and this is one of the first projects. It's a transportation bus that, to be honest with you, their old bus is on its way out. And this is one of those things that with the trips that it can make, it will actually pay for itself. So it was, it's one of those investments, but we'll make it back in transportation costs.
This bus is the one that's used to make the special needs run around the town to pick up all these special needs kids. It also serves for special events like school athletics and all. I was amazed to find out that if they go near Boston, it's $900 they pay the bus company to use a bus for those hours.
The number wasn't that high, Al, years ago when I was on the school committee, but it was still advantageous to have some of your own, your own owned buses on hand.
So this bus was scheduled in our capital plan for two years from now. And I mean, the people should understand that at the beginning of this year, fiscal year, as capital committee, we went to all the departments and said, we don't know where we're going to be. So no capital, unless it's an emergency like the snow dams at the youth center, no capital.
And I think that was the right thing to do.
Well, I mean, you know, people's salary or capital? I mean, you know, it's a hard decision, but we made it. None of the departments griped. But when we found out the Chapter 70 money came in with a couple million extra, we went back to them and said, okay, guys, what would you move forward? Now, this is not, I never thought I wanted a school bus, so let me buy a new one. This was, it's scheduled in two years. It's now costing $10,000 a year in maintenance. So if we wait two or three years, we got a third of the bus paid for.
Yes.
Clerical union retro pay, number 10.
Yeah, this is, I mean, this is something, negotiations obviously went longer than the contractual year. So now this is just back pay and a contract was signed, so.
I think this is something that people should understand. Our strategy has always been, don't budget what we can accept. Because if we go into negotiations and I say, Willie, I have 3% in my pocket to increase the pay for your people, why would you not start at 3?
Exactly.
So we budget zero, let the negotiators deal with it. And then the following year, we backfill the money that, because obviously you don't have the money.
Exactly. No, and that's another, just a Milford tradition way of doing business.
Now, if anybody says, the finance committee never says no to an article. Article 11, Walden Woods Crosswalk.
Yeah, and we had quite a, we had quite a long conversation about this. This is a citizen's petition to add a sidewalk as well as signage, lights, the whole shebang for crossing on Route 85. The proponents of the article came in and they explained it to us. It was our feeling that if we go down this, it's kind of a slippery slope because this wasn't like this is a cross for the bike trail. If it was, to me, that's a town, that's a town issue.
Good point.
You know what I mean? If it was there to the bike trail, I'd say, okay. But in this particular case, it's not. And we found the fear that if we go down this road, when's the next neighborhood that says, there's too many cars driving by our neighborhoods too fast? We want to put in one of these flashing light things and.
But Chris, didn't we do this on Highland Street Extension a few years ago? A citizen's petition came to put new sidewalks all down Highland Street Extension. And we sat there and said, that'd be great, but for a million bucks, you're dealing with how many houses?
Exactly.
This kind of felt the same way that it's $10,000 or $11,000 for design so that we'd be shovel ready to spend 100 or more thousand to actually build a crosswalk.
And I appreciate very much the people who live in those areas. It's just, it's an opinion thing and I just don't think this is a town thing. It's not a bad project. It's just nothing that I can say that the town should be involved in funding.
Well, I think it's great, but like you said, when Highland Street came up and it was a million bucks or whatever, we said, well, that's really too centered on one area. And, you know, it was the same arguments. Anybody from the town can walk down the sidewalks of Highland Street Extension, so it benefits the whole town. You know, I think the Walden Woods people said, anybody could walk across 85 to go walk around Walden Woods. Yes, they could. How many would? I don't know. But this was the only article this year that made it to the warrant that the finance committee gave in unfavorable.
And I appreciate hearing that. I guess I took it from a, from one, a public safety standpoint, and two, how many units are in Walden Woods? None of which are small and their tax bills are quite hefty. So it's just a matter of whether or not it passes. I think it does deserve debate and conversation and things like that because it is a huge development and those folks don't get all the services that the three of us necessarily get, but they certainly pay their taxes.
But there is a crosswalk half a mile further up.
There is.
Right?
At the back of their facility.
Drove over it today.
The back of their facility, there is, already currently one. And that was the other point that was brought up, so.
So that'll be an, I mean, that'll be an interesting debate on town, at town meeting.
That could be the chicken article of this year.
It certainly could be.
Okay, rolling into 13, retro pay for the town accountant.
Again, an agreement was made, a contract was signed. Because of COVID, we pushed some of the contracts out. First of all, we asked some of these folks if, you know, we're going to write it down, we're going to still be, you know, acting in good faith, but can we just deal with all the pandemic stuff as a priority and get to this down the road?
But it sounds like we signed a contract, the town accountant's entitled to, over the period of whatever it is, year and a half, six grand. We owe him the money, we agreed we're going to pay him the money. It's town meeting, they have to vote the money. So time to pay the guy what we owe him.
Yeah. And back to Article 12 that we just skipped over, and it's a big number, so I just wanted to jump back to it.
Oh, I did jump one.
Yeah. I think this was one of the articles that you wouldn't call emergency, but it's pretty darn close to an emergency. They, one of their plow trucks, which was on the capital plan for two years out, is, it can't get on the road. It's basically, it can't pass inspection. It can be repaired for a significant amount of money, and, but it still leaves that truck at the same age. So Scotty proposed it to you guys, a brand new truck at $200,000. And for the repair cost versus replacement, it made sense for.
Doing 30 grand and not knowing if it's going to last a year or two.
Bad money.
Yep.
You know, he swapped out what was this year, he said, hey, I can get another year or two out of that. So that 200 grand is moving forward. And it's one of their main vehicles. This is the one that does Main Street and Purchase Street. You know, it's not a small pick-me-up truck.
No, now, and again, I liked when Chris said earlier that it's not, you know, going into this town meeting, even when we reached out to the schools, it's not that it's extra money, but we all collectively planned for Armageddon and we ended up having a very successful year still. But we don't know what 21, 22, 23 are going to look like. So if we can take care of something now that we're going to need for the foreseeable future, pay for it now, get it off your list on the capital end, move forward and hope that we're sitting here next year, well, you guys are sitting here next year, saying, hey, we planned again for another rough year and we're, and we're good again.
The minute we said that, I said, my biggest concern is that we're putting off a million and a half of capital. So next year's capital is 3 million.
Yeah, when we might not have.
Because the needs don't go away.
Nope.
That's exactly right.
They never do.
You know, we've pared it down because every year we start with about $2.5 to $3.5 million of gotta-have requests and pare it down to a million and a half to two-ish million. So you push most of that through, now you got double the need next year.
And it's very hard to catch up when, again, especially with the schools. When I was on the school committee 1,000 years ago, the philosophy was, eh, the whole, the whole facility's budget for a million square feet was $100,000. Because the philosophy was, eh, we'll get new buildings someday. You're still going to take care of what you have. And I think this is what you guys have done. And you two know more than anybody, when you started this capital group, when you started having your own account, you've done an amazing amount of work and then the town has. And still, it's very hard to catch up. You can't neglect things for 20 or 30 years because that's the life of it and you're going to get a replacement.
Article 14, the assessors revolving account.
This, can I, Chrissy, can I start this?
Oh, please, absolutely.
This has been like somewhat of like controversial, and I, and I think it's interesting. One, it's, at least on the Board of Selectmen standpoint, it's been a good conversation because they're asking for, or the article is funding far more money than they'll use in the next X amount of years. Last time this account was, I think it had put $10,000. I think there's $6,000 still left or $4,000 still left. So initially, it was $100,000, they got it down to $25,000. This is yet another example. And I think it will cause some debate on town meeting floor, but at the bottom line is, we had the money this year. So I think the philosophy was, at least coming out of the finance department, not the finance committee, the finance department was, we have the money, fund it for the next few years and you won't be coming back to us for this. So again, it's not extra money. It's just, we can afford to pay this with $25,000 taking care of their appellate tax board bills for probably the next five years. So I think it's more about just a clearing the deck and putting one of these off.
It's money they would spend.
It's being spent anyway.
Instead of coming to us every year.
Exactly.
Trying to figure, we did that with the injury account.
Exactly.
Where we said, okay, we're going to put a chunk of money in. You still have to debate every penny spent.
Yes.
Because once you use up that money, well, town meeting's got to give you more. So to me, this is nothing more than a more efficient way of managing those expenses.
And also, to be honest, in speaking with the finance director, this is the right way to do it because in every year, they were putting these funds in there and encumbering them when they had no idea whether they were going to spend them. So that was that. And also selfishly, as that being part of their budget every year, when they did a budget increase.
It kept increasing.
It kept increasing too. So selfishly, I liked it coming out too because the Board of Assessors was constantly getting an increase on that, on that part of the budget. So that was another reason I liked it to come out.
Article 15, woodland legal expenses. People are saying, isn't woodland done?
Nope.
I think what people didn't understand was that there's a million dollars at stake that we're trying to ask to come back to us to fix some of the design issues. When we closed out the woodland account, the money we had budgeted for legal expenses got closed. So now it's not there. So all of a sudden.
Litigation's still going on.
You're talking, you know, $80,000 to go after a million.
And I think the one thing that I just, real quick, want to clear up is because one question was brought up on why town council is not doing this and why we're spending the money. Town council is not the lawyer. The building committee has their own lawyer, and it happens to actually be former town council Jerry Moody. But they have their own lawyer and they've been funding their own lawyer. So that's why they're looking for the funds for that.
And at the end of the day, if we took our town council and said, dedicate all this time and energy, then the normal work he does would have to be funded out.
Yep, exactly.
Farmed out. So one way or another.
Either way, you pay.
You're going to pay.
Yep.
Okay. Town meeting improvement committee, Reno will talk about the changes on how people are elected. Can, I mean, there's a, we could spend half an hour talking about the improvement committee. If you're a volunteer, can you serve on a subcommittee? If.
And there's no additional cost to the town.
No additional cost.
Water company, you want more money?
Yes, Alberta. Again, we're so far down the, down the road on this. We were supposed to be getting a decision by the end of the calendar year from the Department of Public Utilities on the decision. Now, there is an appeal process after that where if it goes to, obviously, one of the parties favors, the other can appeal directly to the Supreme Judicial Court. And that's an entirely new appeal, but it's the last cog in the wheel. And the majority of people, at least, and I know, because we've all been part of this conversation from the beginning, we've seen the support for owning our own water company grow. It hasn't diminished. A lot of people that spoke against it, I mean, some of us in this room who never wanted to touch it, now understand the value over the last few years of what it, what do we mean to own and control.
We believe it's going to go our way.
Yes.
We believe if it does, the water company will appeal and we have to have money to fight the appeal.
Absolutely. That's what we're hoping.
You know, we're so far into this now, you know, that it kills me. It feels like Benjamin Moore once again, that we kept saying, just another 150.
Yeah, but to me, and I, and I agree with that, but to me, the one thing that will differentiate that argument is what it's for.
Yes.
And it's for our water. If it was for the Benjamin Moore situation, I may be like, you know, fine. But this is still one of the major, major things that this town needs to accomplish is the acquisition of this water company.
And the one additional topic, comment that we always have to add on because even if we, every time we talk about or have a forum like this where one more person will catch on that if we stop, if we don't decide to do this, we pay for it anyway.
Anyway.
The water company has legal authority and no question would, because any one of us would, to pass all, all those legal fees and all the money they've spent onto the water users, the rate payers. So we pay anyway.
It's not even one time, Willie. Your point is.
Oh, no, it's exponential.
Every time they have an expense, they add taxes, they add their profit margin, they add, and then pass it on.
Yeah, and then add every year onto it, so it's.
So for us, at least if we own it, we're still going to have to fix broken pipes, but we don't have to pay the profit margin, we don't have to pay the tax. Okay, 18, high school. Okay, 18, high school science laboratory.
Yeah, in speaking to the school committee, and especially in speaking to Principal Josh Otlin up there, our science, and this is to your forte, our science labs are atrociously behind the times, like...
I think they're the identical ones we used, Chrissy.
I walked into Z-Wing and said, wow, this looks just like when I was here 40 years ago.
There were some beakers, I think, that still had my name on masking tape on them, and I've been graduated for a long time. No, this is one of the projects that the, that the schools have wanted to do for a while. And then the other thing I want to point out, that most of this is equipment purchases, okay? So if for some reason there is a new high school, all these things can be picked up and brought to them. This is nothing, people are saying, well, why are we spending money at the high school if we're going to get a new high school? This is money that is...
We got commitment, none of this was for bricks and mortar.
Exactly, all of this is stuff that can be picked up and moved at a moment's notice if there is a new school.
And this would bring our kids state-of-the-art dissection tables. I mean, when we were there, you got a frog.
Yep.
Well, it's evolved in four decades. You know, if our kids want to be prepared to go to the best colleges, you know, the best prep schools, everything, they got to have the tools, and this will bring the lab into the current state-of-the-art type facility. Youth center snow guard, number 19.
Again, this is something, a building that this town has invested a lot of money into, it's a huge facility, it's a beautiful facility. Something like this, you just talked about the snow dam, the ice dams and everything like that, it, it needs to get done.
I went there last...
We have to maintain our buildings.
I went there last year to find out, is this really an emergency or a nicety?
Yeah, I heard you, you saw firsthand.
She showed you the videos.
Well, the videos were something, but I went there during snowstorms to see, are they parking there when they say they can't park there? And sure enough, there was no cars, no people, there was fenced off.
Yep.
So it really did tell me that this is not, hey, the tree might fall someday in the near hundred, in the near millennia.
Yeah, no, it fell.
It fell.
Yep.
This was snow coming down, this was whole areas. So, you know, you look at the snow guard, and it's $18,000, but this is really not protecting the building as much as it's protecting people and vehicles going by. I mean, we could talk about 20 painting the town hall. Town hall needs to be painted every so many years. We can debate, as long as they don't...
And when I was a kid, at one point, that fell behind, and I remember driving by, and it was chipping and peeling, and it's embarrassing. We have to maintain our buildings. Yeah, no, we can never go back to the pink and purple, I still have never gotten a straight story on why that. Maybe Benjamin Moore gave us the paint, I'm not sure, but...
We got some extra paint left over, and we took it.
He said, well, that was the original color, yeah, okay, right.
The last time we painted it, six years ago, so it was 280,000. Right now, we got a chance, because the economy is slow, that we got a bid for approximately 250. Now, it has to go out to real bid, but we can save some money.
Yep.
Two articles on land transfer to the Conservation Commission.
We just referred to sponsor on this, the ConCom has done a great job over the last several years in taking spots of land in Milford and taking it under their purview.
Changing the name of Selectmen to Select Board.
I just think it was a matter of time, I, I think honestly, I've served with so many different people over the last six years that made up the board. It honestly never came up in conversation with us, but all our surrounding towns and throughout have turned, so I think it was just a matter of someone doing exactly this, and her name's Lauren Wolfen.
Lauren Wolfen stood up and said, does this make sense? And everybody, I think, when you finally asked the question.
Yeah.
They said, no.
Yep.
So there's two articles, one is to change the name, and then the second, the Selectmen to petition to legally, my understanding is legally change the name.
Yep, it's just the way of getting it done.
Cable access money, I'll have this one, this is simple. We get a percentage, if you have cable TV, Verizon or Comcast, look at the end, you'll see cost of franchise or franchise fee, it's like three bucks a month, all that adds up to 300-ish thousand dollars. That's paid into the town of Milford, and a law was recently put in effect that town meeting has to approve some of that money going to the cable studio in the high school.
Okay.
So it's just a formality, this money's been, there's like 50, 60 grand a year out of the whole kitten caboodle, has been given to the school to help the kids keep up their cable studio. Now we need an official vote by town meeting. Okay, the next ones I ain't touching.
Yeah.
The definition of a balloon.
Yeah.
God bless us.
I was going to say, God bless the planning board, I've never had an interest in getting into any of that.
No, and even worse, the definition of a massage parlor.
Yeah, yeah, that's...
So Articles 26 and 27, we could be back to chickens.
We'll refer to sponsors.
The famous town meeting where we spent $100 million in an hour and a half, and then talked two hours about chickens.
Yeah.
I think the definition, is it a balloon, or is it not a balloon? I'm not even going, is it a massage parlor?
Not a massage parlor.
Mike's not going to miss seeing these two articles.
No, that's for sure.
Town meeting improvement committee's got another article, number 28. Again, this is all to make their committee more efficient. I don't know, the 29, the e-grant program is important to discuss, serious money.
Yeah, and this was one of the things that, when we went to the schools and asked them, you know, what, you know, what is one of your priorities? And obviously, you know, technology infrastructure is just changing so quickly, so they thought they'd like to do that. And when they proposed it to us and said that they still had e-grant money available, to me, all of a sudden, I was like, forget it then, we're in. Because the e-grant is 70% reimbursable, we pay for 30, they pay for 70.
You can't lose.
You can't lose. So that's why when they said they wanted to do infrastructure, and then when they, I found out they still had e-grant money available.
Well, I mean, if you think about it, when we did woodland, it was a 60-40, and we leveraged 400,000 into a million and redid the entire district system. Well, that was only three to five years ago. I think people don't understand that in three to five years, the world changes in technology. It's not even wearing out, it's just the ability to do things. If we want to keep our kids current, if we want to keep our programs current. Every five years, we're going to be replacing, and as I said, to try and explain it in layman's terms, the switches, the niches, the witches, you know, all, all the fundamental pieces, you know, if you think of a large water pipe coming into your house, there's a distribution network that then feeds every sink, every bathroom, that's what this is. The switches are a large internet pipe coming in, and then thousands, you know, those little things on the wall that we plug our computer into and make magic, these switches are what make those little boxes work. And I love the fact that we can get 70% reimbursement.
And every person who walks into the building, they have a phone, and they have their eye watched, and they have their laptop. One person is coming in and they're having three devices connect to the network. So you start counting every person, really times three, you know, it's, it's...
Now, the youth center's coming back for an engineering plan to put air conditioning and humidity control in the basement.
If you don't mind, host, if you wouldn't mind taking care of this, because you have more knowledge on this than anybody else.
Well, the biggest thing here is, I want everybody to understand, you know, we're talking about $30,000 study. Take that out of your mind, it's a half-million-dollar investment, okay? Because you don't spend 30 grand because we want to study. The objective is to take and protect the investment, we've got 6 million bucks into that building. The floor in the basket...
Don't forget the dollar, 6 million because we bought it for...
Six million and $1. The floor itself is in danger if you don't control the humidity above and below, it will buckle.
Yep.
The kids downstairs, now, I was amazed, because when I grew up in the Armory, downstairs was the dungeon. They wouldn't let you down there because they kept the guns and bullets down there, but it was a dungeon. I went down with Brent, and I was amazed to see the classrooms down there. Because in today's day and age, when kids are home, a lot of parents cannot afford to pay 500, 600 bucks a week to have nannies, teachers, you know, just people with their kids. There are classrooms down there that people can bring their children and leave them there, and they have volunteers. And the place is beautiful.
It is.
They've raised a lot of money through grants to really spiff the place up. I mean, they also have the boxing ring down, ring, and they have weights and all sorts of stuff, which is nice. But to me, what really turned my head was seeing that if I can't afford, you know, if I have to choose between eating and having my kid go into an environment for school, I can go down there and not have to make that choice.
Yep.
So the 30 grand would be the study, it would be 150,000, 160,000 to air condition and humidity control the basement, and about 300, because you can't do the bottom of the floor without doing the top. I mean, right now, I get a kick out of it, Jen opens up all the windows and turns on these mega blowers to get rid of the humidity when it's too humid. God bless her for trying, but that's not a way to run an airline. So this is, this is 30 grand, but in everybody's mind, the 30 is going to lead to 500. And enough people thought on the FinCom that this was a good investment. Building department software.
Yeah, this is, I mean, this is something, again, we were still kind of in the, in the stone age when it came to how we're tracking issuing permits, how our, all our different offices or departments are communicating with each other. This is a department that even in the environment we're in, is bringing in hundreds of thousands of dollars in building permits and fees. The office, if it was set up that way, would be self-support, is self-support, self-supportive plus.
Yep.
So with this investment of $68,000, and there is an ongoing expense of 25-plus thousand dollars every, every year for up to 15 licenses, but it's going to speed up the process, and you're going to be able to track everything and not just deal with paper anymore.
But Willie, even if it didn't make money, the ease of use for residents who need permits online. I mean, we used to have the building inspector come to the house, and then you'd wait till he issued a building permit or something.
Absolutely.
Now they can do it online, you can pay online, you can get access online, which means real time. That's what turned me on the most about this.
No, absolutely, and the only reason I, I always like to mention the few departments, because a lot of departments and public entities spend money. This is one of those departments that actually feed into us and actually does quite well. But actually, I just want to say too, in the building department, I was amazed, again, this is how much work people are doing in their houses and everything. We are above last year, and last year was a banner year, we're already running way above to date.
Even during the pandemic.
During the pandemic, because so many people are doing projects on their houses.
Article 32, collective bargaining agreement for the sewer department.
It's a, it's a Board of Selectmen sign-off and negotiation officially, and...
There was a...
Their contract was up.
There was a contract, we negotiated, just like all the ones before.
Yep.
The difference on this one, though, is this comes out of the sewer.
Yes.
Department's enterprise fund.
Yes.
This does not come out of town.
No, and that's what I meant by, it's still officially legally, a town-wide negotiation and contract the Board of Selectmen have to, have to negotiate, but...
It's Article 33, bereavement provisions.
Yeah, the personnel board has had a couple of issues, and one of the things, obviously, is, is this one, on the bereavement adjustment to contracts, and the amount of days you're granted on bereavement. Once again, there's nothing worse than losing a loved one, the personnel board did a good look at it, and, you know, made some adjustments to it. We referred to sponsor because it was a non-monetary article, so...
But this is just humane.
Yep.
And again, this is what was another example of between the personnel board, working with a professional HR director over the last couple of years. Because the fact that, I mean, we were in violation of so many things when it came to employment law and personnel law, and, you know, now we have a new HR director, but even the first one that came on, Maureen, really got us into shape in a very short period of time. The fact that we didn't have stillbirths, miscarriages, unplanned deaths, things like that in a, in a bereavement policy.
But Willie, again, I refer back to, this was in violation with Milford law.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
You know, the law of taking care of Milfordians, somebody going through these type of issues.
And by the way, I think you're right, Milford law was still always allowing people these, I don't even want to say courtesies, because it shouldn't have been a courtesy, but now it's at least on paper.
Now it's legit.
It's nothing to classify as one thing, someone shouldn't have to go through that and come up with a different excuse to...
Some department head shouldn't have to...
Exactly, to mourn the death of their child, yeah.
Any Milfordian that lost a child, could there be anything worse?
Not that I can imagine.
And who's going to, who's going to really sit up and say, you have to come to work tomorrow morning?
Yep.
God. Article 34 is an interesting one, school transportation of foster children.
Yeah, this was something that came from the school department and through DESI and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education.
Yep. This is one that we could apply, if we get town meeting approval, we can apply for, they said, maybe up to 10 grand of free money that the town would get reimbursed for shuttling foster children, and it goes into the general fund. Kathy smiled when she said, this doesn't even come to the school, we're, we're doing this to get the town money.
My smile was bigger than hers.
Well, I think that, I, I also think that these are things that, like, unless you're involved like we are and get into these details, a lot of people don't understand, if a foster child comes to Milford, or someone leaves Milford and put in a foster home, even if they're in Worcester, they're still Milford students. So we have to go get them, bring them to school, and bring them back. With the McKinney-Vento grant, if there's, with the law, if someone's technically homeless from, they were in Springfield, but now they live in a different town, and they're considered homeless, we're responsible for transporting them as well, so...
And this lets, all, all we're saying at town meeting is, can we please fill in the forms so we get paid back for this?
Absolutely.
Salt shed roof.
This is one of those proverbial jokes that we say, we need, we need money in case the roof blows off. It actually happened.
It actually did.
Roof did actually blow up. So on the, on the salt shed metal roof, obviously, they had significant damage because of the wind taking the roof off, so this was, this was an emergency.
Scotty put together his bubble gum and Band-Aids, but at the end of the day, it's not worth spending money doing patches, knowing that it's only going to be a year or so. I mean, this is a 30-grand investment, but kind of hard to say you don't need a roof.
You need a roof on the salt.
And if the roof leaks above the salt, you're paying for salt that's going to wash away.
Yep.
36, Draper and Calzone Park renovation. You want to tell me where Calzone Park is? Because a lot of people say, what?
I know, it's actually, it's literally like a hidden gem that people don't even know it's, it's here in town, it's next to Gail Oger's hair salon, right near...
Sacred Heart Church.
Sacred Heart Church.
It's easier to say Sacred Heart Church.
It just, but it's literally a butt for building, I mean, people don't even know because of the shrubbery, but the Doughboy statue there, and it's mostly, what, Veterans Day and Memorial Day, when we have parades in the past, that's where, you know, most people get exposed to it, because you have two crowds of people. The people that meet at Calzone Park to see the ceremonies, and then the ones, the bigger crowd, obviously, at Draper.
How many times at the town parade, the mayors from the Heights are sitting in Calzone Park.
Set up camp, yep.
Waving, yeah.
It's where I melted my shoes to the pavement, because I had one of the hottest days in that time, so, you know.
Yes. The great part about this is, we've been budgeting it for two, three years, 130 grand. The good news was, we got a grant, we got donations, and that reduced the town to, the cost to the town from 130 down to 40. Because the other two-thirds, the Parks Department, you know, Jim Azim with his hat, he collected money with his hat and got a grant. So this would do the town park, not town park, Draper Park and that little Calzone Park.
Yep.
40 grand's still a ton of money, but it sure is better than 130.
Nope, no question.
Vacation leave requests.
Yeah, this is another change by the Personnel Board, working with the HR director on the ability of our employees to carry over vacation days. It's a non-financial article here, because they only get the same amount of vacation days, they're not getting any more, they're just, if they happen to have not used them. Because what would happen a lot of times is, you would get the end of the year, and everyone realized they had vacation time, everybody started taking days off at the end of the year because they didn't want their vacation days to go away.
And town hall is empty.
Yes, yep. And it all happened at the same time because of the calendar.
38 is another Personnel Board article about being able to adjust somebody's pay mid, I guess, contract or mid-year.
Well, yeah, it's, it's supposed to be associated with increased workload, additional responsibilities, if you become a supervisor.
And you ask me to take on additional responsibilities.
Yep. But we wouldn't, historically, we weren't able to compensate you for that.
I'd say thank you.
Yeah.
Do I get paid more? No, we can't.
Exactly.
So if I take what you're doing and add on, this is a way of saying, I can be fair and compensate you a little bit more, move you up a step or whatever. move you up a step or whatever.
Well, again, the town, you know, our Personnel Board was operating under some of its original bylaws from 1950, somewhere between 52 and 59. This is the most aggressive updating of our personnel laws that's ever been, done or policies.
I'm gonna say something that's gonna get me in trouble, but I don't care.
Go for it, Al, I love it.
The Personnel Board over the last couple of years has got a full thumbs up from me. Because up until now, we kept hearing, we gotta raise salaries by 10% to be competitive, but we are competitive. But we might not be if the moon changes and a meteor hits the building. And it was always these knock-down, drag-out fights. We paid a consultant, but we didn't like him. For the last couple of years, it seems like all the dust has settled, and we're getting things that an old man can understand and stand behind, so I tip my hat to the Personnel Board and the HR Director.
I was just gonna say, I don't think it's a, it's a coincidence that this 110 million dollar corporation, as you would call it, finally decided to hire an HR Director, and we're seeing positive things.
Here you go.
Come out of the Personnel Board, positive changes coming out from the Personnel Board. I think that the work that Maureen done, done, did, excuse me, was just, it was fantastic.
Well, she professionalized it, because when, and I could say this, when the Board of Selectmen tried to make some, some similar changes, it was political, it was this, it was that, it was vendettis, you know, the way Milford is.
Yep.
We had someone come in, look at everything from a, from an outsider's view, and guess what?
But Willie.
Some of this stuff, again.
Find me a 50 million dollar company.
It violated everybody else's work environment.
You know, not even 100 million, but find me a 50 or 25 million dollar company that doesn't have an HR department.
Yep.
And we kept putting it off, but all of a sudden, when we finally admitted, this is a big company.
We don't even have a department, it still is only one person.
It's a department of one.
Yeah.
But, again, the three of us were all here, it was, that was quite the, quite the battle.
TIF agreements, everybody always says it's corporate welfare. This is a TIF agreement that's being rescinded. I don't think a lot of people really understand, I mean, I love TIF agreements that generate tax money.
Yes.
Like, we had a company that got a TIF agreement, and then they left the town, and everybody was all up in arms, selectmen, you gave them a TIF. And I said, great, did they take the building? If they don't take the building, that means that whoever owns the building.
They're still paying.
They're paying, and their TIF agreement is done.
Null and void.
Now, they pay full taxes.
Yes. That's why you really can't get hurt by one in, for the most part, in a long, you know, on your strategy. It is a marathon. But like this one, and by the way, the two companies that we gave the most recent TIFs to were fantastic to work with. They wanted to be here. These, these people, Interactions LLC, literally got wrapped up with the pandemic.
Right.
So, it's not even any ill will, but they reached out to us immediately. They know that we have to go to the next town meeting and pull that TIF, but they said, we can't relocate, we certainly can't expand under these conditions.
But if you base a TIF, if I'm paying 100 dollars in taxes, an ABC corporation, and I want to expand, I don't get a break on the 100 I'm paying.
Nope.
Nope.
I get a break on the 50 I could be paying if I expand.
And that was the difference between the two companies. One wanted to expand their current operations in Milford. These people were coming from Franklin, they were a whole new customer.
Yep.
They were coming in to a vacant building that was being paid taxes on, but coming in, expanding it, and.
And they're gonna make significant investment, cause that property to be more valuable, cause more tax income, so, I mean.
But I think people have to understand, the TIF agreements, if you base them on adding value to property, not that I'll hire 20 Milfordians or something that I can't track. I'm going to improve the value of the property, so I'm gonna be paying 50 bucks more in taxes instead of my 100. I get a year or two off, okay? When it's over, the building is still there, and now the base is 150, not 100. I don't lose anything, and if I leave, you stop it, and the new people not only have to pay, but they have to pay at full price.
Yes.
And to Will's point, there's Interactions, I would love to see them back here in a couple of years if their business continues to go back, because their presentation was fantastic, and their ideas for the facility were fantastic.
Yeah, and this is not my understanding, this is not the Selectmen casting doubt on them. It's just, okay, if you're not coming, you don't get a TIF.
No, and by the way, we legally have to do this. I mean, you can't give someone a TIF if they're not here.
Yeah, exactly.
That's where common sense has to prevail.
40, this is recycling money, waste cost differential.
Yeah, to be honest with you, I've been talking the last couple of years with the Board of Health on this, and the continuing trend of recycling costs going up significantly. And the main reasons are, basically, China, who is one of our biggest importers of our recyclables, have stopped taking them. They said, we have our own recyclables, we don't even need yours. So, now we have this gluttony of recycling that we can't process here. So, the plants are charging more and more, I think, I believe it's 110 dollars per ton for recycling, and only 60 dollars per ton for regular garbage.
Boy, did that change.
Yeah. And we used to get credits, we used to get money back for all of them.
We used to get money for it.
So, I, being, you know, a smart Alex at the Juck, I said, let's just tell people to stop recycling. I'll start stealing blue bins. And she said, no, you know, it was a joke, but she said, listen, she goes, obviously, Mass DEP, it's required that you offer recycling. So, this is something that we have to deal with, and unfortunately, with dealing with it is increased costs. So, the Board of Health was looking for 225,000.
225, yeah.
To supplement their budget because of the increased recycling costs.
Now, we get to the last articles, and people say, why are you putting away another million dollars into stabilization? I mean, you know, my standard line is, there's a school coming someday, six, seven years away, there's be 150 million dollar renovation to Milford High School. But I guess the question comes out in the past years, I mean, we're gonna have a pretty significant, what we call free cash surplus. But the FinCom is taking a position that we're not gonna spend it all or recommend it's all spent. Let's hold some in case the rest of the year is not as nice as the beginning. So, putting away a million towards tax relief helps the town, but keeps some away. Putting away a million into stabilization helps us long-term. Anything more?
Well, I mean, you had just mentioned, we forgot a lot of capital this year. And let me tell you, we're not gonna have 1.5 million dollar in capital this year, we're gonna have to spend a lot more than that to try to make up for some of the other stuff. So, this was, to your point, is exactly that, the strategy of putting this money away, because we're probably gonna need it as near as next year for increased capital.
And tax relief.
Well, Will, I'm proud to, to the time that Will's been on the Selectmen, and the proud that we've been on the Finance Committee, that this number has increased every single year to an astronomical number that I never thought possible.
It's not sustainable, we heard seven years ago.
1.8 million dollars, I was the one that said that. I said, this is crazy. But we're at 4.5 million dollars now. And I use the old, you have your potato chip, I, my saying is, I want to give the customers their change. And to me, this is, this is the taxpayers' change. Yeah, we could go out and spend the money, but the point is, we don't need to. We're not going without a lot, and the taxpayers owe their money back.
This warrant proves that.
That is exactly right, good point.
Well, I can't think of one thing that we're not doing. If we had a roof blow off, Salt Barn, town hall looking decrepit because we can't paint it, that would be different.
Yep.
But I see us taking care of everything we need to. So, it just means that we're lucky enough that we have town department heads watch their money, and we should give half of it or more back.
Yeah, and I'm one of those people, and we said that off-camera, that I think sooner or later, and I'll be gone next April, but at some point in the future, you guys may have, hopefully, are in a position where you're looking to say, when is there enough money in the bank? Are we charging people too much? Are we not giving enough change back? I think that, and I hope that that's a discussion that you guys actually end up having, because that means we're in really good shape.
I think you have to have that every year. And what we're saying is, we're not sure yet.
Nope.
But let's take a million to 2 million and put it back into the pockets, because.
Absolutely.
This is not a fiefdom, people don't owe us that money.
Nope.
So, if we have that surplus, one hats off to the department heads, but two, in my mind, we owe it back.
But again, this is why, like, we talked about those science labs, when we joked that they were that way 25 years ago. You said that they looked that way 40 years ago. The only thing that we have to really, really be forward-thinking about is, whether it's our schools or other things, we shouldn't be allowing that to happen.
Right.
Because we want, we have all this money in the bank, we want kids to come here, move here, we want them to go to school here, we want them to get in good colleges, we want them to be exposed to all the things they should be. And you, and we actually can afford to expose our kids to the same things the Wellesley kids get, the Weston kids get, and not every town can say that.
And now, as we come to the end, as always, thank you for watching, to our six loyal viewers. May tomorrow be a better night than tonight. God bless, and let's hope we have a town meeting, but if not, we'll take care of these articles. Now that we're leaving, masks back on.
Yes, sir.
Thanks for having us, Al.
Thank you, Al.
Thank you for coming, and good night, and may God bless.